Thirty-five years I ran on bells. Okay, I'm good. We're gonna call the council meeting for the city of Ashtabula on Monday, October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We will call the meeting to order at this time. If you would please stand for the prayer and the pledge.
Heavenly Father, we ask you to let your inspiration precede this council's actions and all present here today, and your assistance further us so that every word and work of ours may take its beginning from you, and so begun may through you reach its completion. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, I forgot to, if we could have a moment of silence for Jim Timmonier, James Timmonier, the attorney who passed away a couple of weeks ago. He was our solicitor back in nineteen seventy-nine when I started working here. So he put in a lot of time for the city and he passed away a couple of weeks ago.
All right, so at this time, we will have a moment of silence for former solicitor, James, Jim Timmonier. Thank you, and thank you, Mrs. Foglio, for bringing that to our attention. Ms. Dunlap, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Holman.
President.
Ms. Mills.
Here.
Mrs. Haynes De Giacomo.
Here.
Ms. Folio.
Here.
I'm sorry. Here. Mr. Crawford.
Here.
Mr. Spielman.
Here.
Mr. Roskovic.
Here.
Mr. Timmonier.
Here.
Ms. Cooper.
Here.
Ms. Augustine.
Here.
And myself.
Very good. We have no absence this evening. We are meeting the requirements of the sunshine law. There is no need for an executive session, so we will move on with the approval of the minutes from October second.
So I read this, right? Okay. The October second, two thousand and twenty-three regular council meeting was called to order at seven P. M. by Council President Roskovic. Ms. Holman offered the opening prayer, and the pledge of allegiance was recited. Members present were Mr. Roskovic, Mr. Spielman, Ms. Foglio, Mr. Crawford, Ms. Holman, Ms. Mills, Mrs. Haynes De Giacomo. Officers present were City Solicitor Cooper.
Having seen the minutes, can we have a motion to waive the reading of the minutes in their entirety?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Spielman, second by Mrs. Mills. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The minutes will stand by a seven to zero vote. At this time, we will move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two ordinances to ask for tonight. First is an ordinance to enter into agreement with Union Industrial Contractors here in Ashtabula for the purpose of providing labor and materials for an emergency repair to the Morton Drive bar rake in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. Funding for this expense will be taken from Fund five oh four.
Move on the manager's request.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Spielman, second by Mr. Crawford. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add it to our agenda by a seven to zero vote.
Next, I would like an ordinance to enter into an agreement with Amadola Engineering of Lakewood, Ohio, for the purpose of conducting a mixing zone study and necessary work related to the relocation of Outfall Number Zero Zero One discharge at the water pollution plant in the amount not to exceed twenty-two thousand dollars. Funding for this expense will be taken from Fund five oh four.
Move on the manager's request.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Spielman, second by Mrs. Foglio. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add that to our agenda by a seven to zero vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's all I have to request. Just two announcements. Number one, do remember that we are doing leafbag pickup curbside, so this week, the week of October sixteenth, we are in the various wards. Have your leafbags out now, and we will get to them by the end of the week. I know probably not many people had a chance to clean up the yards with the wonderful weather we had this weekend, but if you do have anything, just put it at the tree lawn, and we will come and pick that up. And then remember Halloween is also on the twenty-eighth. That is Saturday from five to seven P. M., so please be cautious with all of our little ones out there going door to door for trick or treat. Mr. President, that's all I have for my report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Timmonier. Any questions? Ms. Cooper?
I have no more report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Ms. Augustine?
Yes, Mr. President, we would like to request an ordinance to make supplementary increases in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, one twenty-four and thirty-four cents to cover expenses for health insurance in the sanitation department.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move on the Finance Director's recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Foglio, second by Mr. Spielman. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add that to our agenda by a seven to zero vote. Anything else, Ms. Augustine?
No, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And Clerk of Council Dunlap, do you have anything for us this evening?
No, I have no report.
Thank you very much. We will move on to committee reports, and we will have a committee report from Community and Economic Development.
Yes. So we did have a meeting last Tuesday, and our guest was Mr. Greg Myers. He is the Executive Director of Growth Partnership for Ashtabula County, and he said that Growth Partnership is working on the following: project management for projects such as Pepman, business attraction, business retention and expansion, site development and brownfield remediation. Economic indicators show that the citywide GTP is strong based on current data, two thousand and twenty-one, and has seen a nine point six percent growth, keeping pace with the state and federal levels and gaining productivity lost during the pandemic. The civilian labor force, people engaged in work or actively seeking work, is up. The labor force in August of twenty-two was forty-third. The county unemployment rate in two thousand and twenty-three is three point nine percent. The average weekly wage in the county has increased six point nine percent from last year, eight hundred and eighty-two on average, up from eight twenty-five last year. Ohio's average wage increase over the past year is seven point three percent. The labor shortage is caused by insufficient bodies at the skill level to fill the positions. There are a hundred and fifty to a hundred and fifty job openings in the county in manufacturing, healthcare, and government. The quality of applicants and retention of applicants has gotten better in the last few years. There is an opportunity to connect with high school students regarding job opportunities that exist for them here in the county, good-paying jobs with a career path. There has been the most, this has been the most active time for companies looking to invest. Growth Partnership has responded to sixteen requests for proposals, thirteen of which included locations in or adjacent to the city of Ashtabula. Of the thirteen, we were shortlisted for one. Business expansion and retention projects include working with the owner of the former First Energy property regarding cleanup and redevelopment through planning studies on how to reuse that property. Workforce development, Growth Partnership has partnered with Ashtabula County Community Action and Jobs and Family Services on a summer camp at Beaumont. The three-day camp includes leadership skills, targeted information on in-demand jobs. The Morrison Foundation provided funding. Growth Partnership is also conducting career fairs at Lakeside High School and at six other high schools. Local companies are there promoting careers. A program for fifth and sixth graders is also available. The steps the city is taking to redevelop the downtown are important to building a sense of place. After working with an informal group of eighteen to forty-year-olds regarding what is needed in order to keep or attract youth back to the area, Growth Partnership is looking to put something more formal together, a young leaders group. It is unlikely the county would attract a big-box store like Target or Kohl's. Sales tax in the county has grown due to online shopping. What the county does provide is an experience, people to go to Bridge Street for the experience. There is an opportunity to attract people. The city manager's report, good things are happening. The hotel in the harbor will open in spring of two thousand and twenty-four. The Curlyall Project has begun on Main Avenue. Cleanout at Shays Theater is almost complete. Mr. Timmonier has seen the first draft of the Appalachian Community Grant that will be submitted. The city of Ashtabula focuses on the downtown with projects totaling nine million. Projects include street scape, I can't read tonight, sorry. Mr. Timmonier will be meeting with the consultant to hone in on details for the city's portion of the application, the application partners, the city of Ashtabula with other downtown in the county, as well as two other counties. Mr. Timmonier pointed out the recent investment in the city's housing totaling a hundred and ten million. The Parks Board wanted to thank Mr. Timmonier for a potential change in the court configuration at Smith Field. I believe that we will have four courts at Harbor Top Key and then do a tennis court at Smith Field. This doesn't interfere with the funding, and My Neighborhood Collaborative is going to have a bonfire, which is scheduled for November fourth from six to eight, some more than hot dogs, and the event is open to the public and volunteers, and that will be at Caden Park. And Julie, the president of My Neighborhood Collaborative, she is working with senior housing to provide social services for the residents. They will provide an independent contractor eight hours a week to help seniors connect with these services. And our next meeting is going to be November fourteenth at four-thirty, and our guests are Jamie Baker and Huntington Bank, so we'll get an update on what's going on downtown.
Ms. Haynes De Giacomo, can I just add? I wasn't sure if I heard that one part about, we have eight hundred graduates a year in our county, so Mr. Myers was saying that they're really trying to work with the youth, that we're really trying to attract youth, whether you go off to college or you have a trade, that there are things to do in Ashtabula, places to live, jobs. And one of the things that was interesting was that nine thousand people do commute in to Ashtabula to work, which I thought that was an interesting fact, too. So he had a lot of, I thought, really positive information that's happening, so.
Mr. President, Counselor Haynes De Giacomo, just curious about a couple of things. If you don't have the answer, it's okay. Was there any mention of the demographics or the racial or gender makeup of the applicants to jobs, or who was hired? I don't think so. Was there?
No.
I don't think there was.
Mr. President, Ms. Holman, that was, the data that they had was just of what was available or what was being hired for, but they, that's of the various companies throughout the county, so they wouldn't have the data of what the demographics are of each of the businesses, whether they did the hiring or not.
You're just reporting a bit jobs.
Correct. Yes.
So that would be good information at some point in time for us to know. And the other question is for you, Mr. Manager. I understand that this Appalachian Opportunity Grant is given to the county.
Mr. President, Ms. Holman, no. So the, the application is actually going to be submitted by Eastgate in Youngstown. They're going to be the lead applicant, and then the funds will be distributed to Eastgate, I believe, first. They may flow through the county to manage the project, but I think Eastgate is going to be the lead on everything.
Okay, do you have a sense of how it will be decided, the portion that will be given to cities?
I don't. So it is a, when they came out and announced this program, the big buzzword was, of course, regionalization. So we have tried, or what is being put together is a collaborative effort of the downtowns that wanted to participate within Ashtabula County, and then there'll be the downtowns that want to participate in Trumbull and, Ashtabula, Trumbull, and Mahoning, I think, are the three counties that are part of this. And then it'll go to the Controlling Board, and the Controlling Board of the state will decide how much money comes to these projects, and I don't know how they're going to disseminate it from there. That was one of our biggest concerns when we had the community meeting of how the funds would be distributed when they were announced, and who's going to get what.
Do you think that at some point in time, it will be transparent?
I do. I don't see why it wouldn't be. Applications, I think the portal is opening in November, with applications due by January of two thousand and twenty-four. They're predicting they'll get in front of the Controlling Board in April or May with awards sometime after that. Now, having said that, they've already pushed a deadline back, and the rules constantly change with this program, so we do know that whatever projects are awarded, they must be completed and paid for by October of two thousand and twenty-six. That's the drop-dead, everything has to be done date.
Year and a half?
Yes. So people have to be very, very cognizant of the projects that they want to do, the availability of material, our construction season, all of that stuff has to be considered when, when somebody submits for a project. So that's, we kept ours, or the city's portion of street scape is sidewalks, and then we want to do this facade program. And then, like I said, there's a couple other projects that are involved in the, in the grant.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Manager, Ms. Haynes De Giacomo, when you talked about Smith Field, you said one tennis court that you guys are planning? I mean, I've got my pickleballers that are, I thought they were planning on two tennis courts.
So let me, they brought a petition, the pickleball people brought a petition that first went to the Parks Board, which got brought to our meeting. So the pickleball people need four courts to hold a competition.
Four courts or four?
Four pickleball courts in one location.
One, two, three, four. Because a tennis court is actually half a pickleball court, right?
So what the request is, there was going to be two pickleball courts and a basketball court at Smith Field. The request is to move the tennis court that's at Walnut Beach or Walnut Boulevard, move that tennis court to Smith, and then where we stripe the two pickleball, make those permanent.
Okay, all right, because I know, yeah.
So that puts four at?
That puts four at?
Walnut.
At Walnut.
At Walnut.
Yes.
Because it's just like, it's crowded, I mean, it's not crowded now, but it was like, I was walking the dog one day, and I heard them screaming down the street, way down the street, and, I mean, it's just, we have so many pickleball players that I want to make sure that.
It's the hottest growing sport.
It is, it is, and it's just getting bigger and bigger, and so I just want to make sure that, you know, they have room to play, and, okay, that sounds good.
Does anybody know why it's called pickleball? I'm just wondering. I have no idea, but anyway.
We all have smartphones.
They're looking up, why is it called pickleball? I don't know. All right, well, thank you very much for that report, Ms. Haynes De Giacomo, and it really, I mean, it really is exciting. You think about this point in a hundred and ten million dollars of development in the city of Ashtabula. There's development going on in the county, a lot of it's freeway, freeway-related, you know, you go out to the ninety, you see a lot of development out there, which is good. We're excited for any development in our county, but we have a hundred and ten million dollars right here in the city, you know, and that's just, wow, and I think more is underway, I think, you know.
Mr. President?
Yes.
On that economic development, I did go to the Made on Main meeting at the Chamber that was held by Stu Cordell and Jamie Baker. So just an update that I met the contest winners, the owner of the Shays Theater was there, they're working on the process for storefronts and Main Avenue updates, so that, that was really an exciting, exciting buzz, and I think they're gonna have some exciting things on Main coming soon.
Thank you. Mrs. Mills, okay, I'm with our committee reports, finance and personnel.
Our meeting is this Friday at eight-thirty A. M. upstairs in the Augie Pugliese Conference Room.
Public Works?
Public Works is scheduled to meet October twenty-third, Monday at five P. M. in the Augie Pugliese Room, and we will have Diane Crumley, who is the Director of Clubs for the newly-formed Boys and Girls Club of Ashtabula, so we'll get to hear about that.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford, if you wouldn't mind, can we hold the meeting in here?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, as long as it's after four, you'll be good.
Okay.
And then Safety Forces?
We are scheduled to meet also on October twenty-third. We're going to meet at eight forty-five upstairs in the Augie Pugliese Conference Room.
And that's next week already? Okay, good.
Yep, next Monday.
All right. And then Planning Commission and Historic Preservation Commission, Planning Commission should be this week, I think, or next week? Anyway, but we, there was a Historic Preservation Committee meeting, two items on their agenda. One was a house in the harbor to be torn down on Morton Drive. It's a house in, you know, another one of those houses that hasn't been heated, hasn't been taken care of, and it's, so it's going to be, the owner has bought it and is going to be tearing it down. And the other thing was some window repairs to, and I can't think of the name of the, do you remember the name of the new bar that's going in where the L. A. Cafe is? Harbor something, Harbor, it's, it's going to be a new bar eatery kind of thing where the L. A. Cafe used to be, down by the art store in between Fitzgerald's. So they're putting in some new windows that are, are going to be, and they're getting ready. They were hoping to be further along in the process, I imagine, but so they're getting, I think, some finishing touches on, on that project. I wish I could remember the name, Harbor or something, but they have a really neat, a local artist, Jolene Schwartz, you know, she makes the postcards, and she did the sign out the parking. She made a sign for them and some, and it's really sharp. It's the lift bridge, but instead of the side view, it's like driving overview, and then it has a mug with the name of the bar. It's really, it's a nice-looking shirt, you'll have to see it, but I wish I could. So those were the only two things for the Preservation Committee, okay? All right, we come to the legislative part of our agenda tonight. If anybody in the audience would like to address any one of these items, a change order with Wilkinson Paving for the sidewalks on Lake Avenue, an amendment to our two thousand and twenty-three budget, a contract with Union Industrial Contractors for Morton Drive, and a contract with Amadola Engineering for the Outfall Number One. Would anybody like to address any of those items? Okay. Seeing then, we will continue on with our legislation. Mrs. Dunlap, would you read us the legislation this evening?
Ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three dash one forty-three, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into change order number one with Wilkinson Paving for an additional three thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars for the restoration of sidewalks on Lake Avenue. Ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three dash one forty-four, an ordinance to make supplemental increases and or decreases to appropriations in the general fund, police levy, streetlight assessments, food services, paving levy, A. M. C. computer, police funds, permanent improvement fund, W. P. C. capital fund, workers' compensation fund, government, I'm sorry, general government and intergovernmental funds for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Ashtabula, State of Ohio, for the period January one through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three dash one forty-five, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Union Industrial Contractors, Inc., in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars for the purpose of providing labor and materials for the Morton Drive bar rake emergency repairs. Ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three dash one forty-six, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Amadola Engineering, Inc., for the purpose of conducting a mixing zone study and necessary work related to the relocation of Outfall Number, Outfall One discharge in an amount not to exceed twenty-two thousand.
Those are our four items of legislation. Is it council's desire to handle these in consent agenda format?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Foglio, and a second by Ms. Holman. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will handle these items by a seven to zero vote in consent agenda format. Can I entertain a motion to waive the reading of the legislation in its entirety?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Spielman, second by Mrs. Foglio. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will waive the reading of the legislation in its entirety by a seven to zero vote. May I have a motion to waive the charter requirements for two readings of the legislation?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Holman, and a second by Mr. Spielman. Any discussion? Mrs. Dunlap, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Haynes De Giacomo?
Yes.
Ms. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovic?
Yes.
Ms. Holman?
Yes.
Ms. Mills?
Yes.
We will waive the charter requirements by a seven to zero vote. We will now vote on the adoption of this evening's legislation. Will you please call the roll?
Ms. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovic?
Yes.
Ms. Holman?
Yes.
Ms. Mills?
Yes.
Mrs. Haynes De Giacomo?
Yes.
Tonight, our, our four items of legislation have passed by a seven to zero vote. Is there any unfinished business before council? Any new business for council? Any new business for council?
Mr. President, I, I don't know if this falls under new business, but Mr. Manager, I'm, I'm kind of going to put you on the spot. Does the city of Ashtrabula have a nepotism clause in, in anywhere?
Nepotism?
Nepotism, hiring someone's family members, family member, daughter, son.
I don't think counselors.
No, 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 no. It, and it has nothing to do with Mr. Timmaner. It has nothing to do with anything that you've done. I'm just interested because.
I don't. I know we follow Ohio Revised Code, uh, and all the policies that come into the, uh, labor laws when it comes to that in the municipality. I know there's our, there are defined sections of that of the Ohio Revised Code. Do we have written policies on that? I'd have to, I mean, between like the fire department, the police department, the courts, uh, everybody has their own individual policies. I, I don't recall if anything is in those pertaining to that. But regardless of what would be in those, we would still have to follow Ohio Revised Code.
Ohio Revised Code, I'll have to look that up, okay. And that would go for any department, even if you're not over that department?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, Ohio Revised Code is kind of the law of our land, yep.
All right, thank you. I'll look that up.
Thank you, Ms. Spiel. Anything else? Any other unfinished business? Any new business?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just on the unfinished business, Mr. Manager, can you just update folks on gas line repairs, how things work for sidewalks and grass, since there's been a lot of work. It's a good thing that we're getting these lines, but I know it's been like, you know, June, July, August, September, and folks are getting a little, you know, anxious. We have things tore up and then re-tore up, so.
Yeah, um, Ms. Mills, the, the Dominion, as you know, is installing a lot of new gas lines uh, throughout the community, specifically over on the east side right now. Um, the project is not completed. Um, so they are, they are still working on different restorations, whether that be sidewalks, whether that be the sidewalks have been poured, but there's still forms out there, whether that be the sidewalks have been poured, but the forms are gone. And now that, now the landscaping needs to be redone. So there's a lot of different stages that go into this. Um, I know people are anxious for the project to be over with, but we do need a little bit more patience. Um, it's not complete. Uh, if there are any issues, um, I know that everybody has been pretty much calling you, but they can certainly call our office, because you're going to relay that message to me and we're going to get it out to where it needs to be. Um, but please call our office or send an email. Uh, we will, we will contact Dominion just to make sure that they're aware, but I can tell you they are aware. Uh, every issue that you've sent my way, they're, the message back has been the project is not complete yet, so, but I do relay those messages.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We will continue on then. We do have three liquor license uh, transfers this evening. We have one from Bren Mark's Enterprises on Lake, uh, formerly on Lake Avenue to Becker's Restaurant on West Prospect uh, Avenue in, uh, Ashtrabula. Um, that's a transfer of a liquor license. Uh, and that is word three. Uh, Ms. Holman, is there any, uh, questions or concerns for, uh, a public hearing or anything along those lines?
Not at this moment.
Thank you, Ms. Holman. We also have a notice for legislation for a liquor permit transfer to DG's Two. And that, I think, is already in business, but we need to, uh, note, uh, be aware that it, it's within five hundred feet of, of, of a park. So, any questions or concerns, Ms. Holman? That's also in your word.
Not at the moment.
Okay, thank you. And then finally, we have a new liquor license for the Ashtrabula Yacht Club, which is on West Fifth Street in Asheville, Ohio. And Mr. Crawford, I believe that's your word. Any questions, concerns, call for a meeting?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, so those are our new liquor, uh, we had three liquor permit transfers, all right. And then we will move on to tell us something, tell us something we don't know, if any counselor or anybody at the DAS would have anything they'd like to share with the public that we didn't get to this evening. I would, I would just like to mention, and I did send it to council, um, the article that appeared in the Washington Post, which is really, I mean, the Washington Post is like, like the top, you know, one of the top papers in the country. But they did an article on Ashtrabula, how red state, uh, policies are uh, cutting short on our lifespans here in Ohio. It, it was a very interesting article. And it compared, uh, Ashtrabula to Erie and to New York, which have different policies because of the state, the state governments they have tend to be a little bit different than our state government. But it's just an interesting read. You know, a lot of times I'll mention that Ashtrabula, we get a lot of good press because we're a good travel spot and this or that, but this was a little bit different take. Uh, ve- very thorough, a long article, three reporters, um, about uh, health issues that are here in Ashtrabula, Ohio. And I was also, when I read that, I was also thinking how, um, uh, good for our council that a couple of years ago, we formed a committee, uh, led by Ms. Holman, uh, racism as a health issue, recognizing that there are a lot of factors that are affecting the lifespan and the quality of health for our residents and that we are doing, uh, and we are still studying that. We had a meeting last week. You'll be getting more information from that committee. But I thought that was in, uh, how, uh, I think that was good for us to be forward-thinking and then this article sort of confirms that that, that's good, that we are, are addressing these issues. So that was all I have for tonight. Does anybody have, else have anything they'd like to share?
Mr. President, I saw on Facebook, um, progress sometimes changes everything. Saturday is the last Super Bowl for the Ashtrabula Midget Football League who used to play at Winterfield. Um, after this season, that will become a development other than a football league. So they put on Facebook that they'd like all the former players to come to the Super Bowl. Um, the JV game starts at five, the varsity game will be after that. My son played in the Ashtrabula Midget League, my nephew played in the Ashtrabula Midget League. There were some great coaches and volunteers. Um, great opportunity for young men to learn to work together. And so it would be great to see everybody out there to thank all those coaches over the years that made a difference.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. That's pretty interesting.
Mr. President, just to, just to clarify, it's the last Super Bowl at that field.
Yes, at that field.
The league is going to stay in and we've offered them several other locations that they'll be able to move to next year. One of the reasons we're doing a lot of the work at the Smithfield is because we knew this was coming uh, for the harbor, former Harbor High School football field. So there will be in the fall time, the ability to, um, have a football field in the outfield at Smithfield.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Solicitor, uh, Ms. Cooper made me think of the ADDA, the, the chili cook-off, because that was canceled. Um, I know the, the Brew Fest, I volunteered at that in the rain and wind and that was very successful down in the harbor. But I got the alert that they canceled. And I think the Solicitor's Office was in for the chili cook-off and the police officers and so I'm, I'm, haven't heard of a rescheduled date yet.
I have not either.
They were supposed to have a, they were having a Zoom meeting tonight to determine.
Cause I was wanting to taste your chili.
We're very excited to serve it, because we'd like, we'd like to win.
Is it nice and spicy?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? Anybody else have anything?
I do, real quick. Uh, over the past couple of weeks, there, um, Square One had a, an open house at their facility over on West Forty-Fourth, over that way. Um, and then Home Safe had their, uh, big annual fundraiser the other, um, out at Jefferson. Um, my point is that it's an, it's nice to live in this tiny community that's, that's full of people that want to help other people that are down on their luck. That Home Safe fundraiser, there was a million people there and they raised a ton of money. And then that open house was, was quite eye-opening to see. So, um, it, it's, it's really quite fantastic. However, these folks wind up down on their luck, it's great that there's people here in this community, um, that are willing to help them. So it was, it was nice to see. And that was it.
I, I also went to the open house, saw Mr. Spielman there at Square One. And, um, it, it is really a great facility and, and there's a lot of people in our town who are homeless and, and supposedly would like to better their life. And, and Square One does offer a, um, oh gosh, what do I want to say? You can go for detox and that is in the old Nag and Rag Building on Carpenter Road, Dr. Ragupathy's office. And then you can go from there right into Square One for a twenty-eight day residential program. You go from there into a halfway house. They have several halfway houses for you to go. Get yourself on your feet, get yourself back out there again into the rural world. So there is help in the city for people who need it. It's just a phone call away and it's Square One, they will do it for you.
Where was that, Mike? The, uh, Square One?
Right down here, it was the old senior living, right down the end of Forty-Fourth.
Close behind the post. It's a, it's a weird location. It's hard to get to. There's that big field over there.
Oh, by the overpass?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, 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 okay, I know.
Mister practice marching band sometimes over on that field. But I went to Ashtrabula.
And it's beautiful.
It really is.
All right, thank you. Thank you for that. Very good. Uh, anybody else? All right, seeing no one? If anyone in the audience tonight would like to address any concerns for council, we would be happy to hear from you at this time. Just approach the podium. Okay, seeing no one? Um, our next council, this is one of those times where we have three weeks in before, in between council. So our next meeting will be November sixth. I wrote it down somewhere. November sixth, uh, at six, six-thirty will be our pre-council, seven o'clock, our regular meeting, November sixth. That's actually the day before, uh, Election Day. So, uh, we're, but that's three weeks from now. So you have an extra week. And, uh, that'll give you time to eat your candy and such. Get candy, all right? Anybody else have anything? All right, we wish everybody a good couple of weeks, uh, and stay healthy, happy, get your, I got my shots and, and they're available now, so. No, I went to the Hoffman's Pharmacy. And I'll call the meeting adjourned. I went to Hoffman's Pharmacy.